Let's bow our heads for a moment. Lord Gold, we thank you for this year just gone. Thank you for our mayor, councillor Jeanette Potter, for her devotion to service, her hard work and her care for others. We thank you for those who have supported her, for their dedication to the task and desire to bless our city. We thank you for the mayor's chosen charity, Farley Hospice, and we pray that you will bless them in the work that they do. We thank you for all of our councillors and those civil servants who support them. We pray for your blessing upon their continued work and also for the work of our new mayor. We are here not for our own benefit, even if our motives are sometimes mixed, but for the benefit of others. May we always keep this aim before us, following the example of Jesus, who came not to be served but to serve and to give his life as a ransom for many. In his name we pray. Amen.
I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded and streamed live on our website. I've also been asked at meetings of the council to make a standard evacuation announcement. Please note that, in the case of an emergency, a bell will ring continuously. If this occurs, please leave the council chamber at once, taking your personal belongings with you. Follow the green fire exit signs to leave the civic centre onto Duke Street via the stairs, which are located near to the end of the corridor adjoining the chamber. Lifts should not be used. Please gather by the War Memorial immediately outside the civic centre and, if and when it is safe, to return to the building. An announcement will be made. You should not return to the building until told that it is safe to do so. Anyone attending this meeting is entitled to film it, but I should point out that only the councillors, officers and anyone sitting around these tables may be filmed. Members of the public should not be filmed, so please ensure that cameras are pointed only in this direction. Please reduce silence or switch off your mobile phones whilst the meeting is taking place. Apologies for absence. Agenda item one is apologies for absence. I have apologies for absence from councillors Armstrong, Chambers, Paul Clark, Davis, Deakin, Jeeps, Raven, Sampson, Scott, Sizme and Tron. Are there any more to report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I've also got apologies from councillors Bugby and Davy.
Thank you. I have some announcements under agenda item two. I would like to thank councillors Marie Goldman and Graham Pooley for their service as city councillors following their recent resignations. I would also like to welcome councillors Helen Ays. Hello. And Sean Manley. Hello. To the council after they were elected at the beginning of May as new councillors for the Molsham and Central Ward. Well done. The mayor's cadet, Staff Sergeant Ben Mahoney, could not be in attendance this evening due to him taking his exams. Ben hopes to be accepted at Sandhurst, so these exams are very important to him and I would not want him to miss out. We will meet after he has finished to be able to present him with his certificate. But I have received the following message this morning from him. Dear Madam Mayor, I wanted to extend my sincere thanks to you and your team for the warm welcome and support you've shown me over the past few months. It has been a real pleasure to attend various events alongside you and your staff. I've especially appreciated the opportunity to meet new people and become involved in community activities that I might not have otherwise known about. Your kindness and encouragement have made a lasting impression and I'm truly grateful for the experiences this involvement has brought me. As your term comes to a close, I wish you and your team all the very best in whatever you go on to do. I'm confident we'll cross paths again at future events and I look forward to that. I'd also like to express my thanks to Deputy Mayor Susan Sullivan for her support during this time. I wish her every success moving forward as well. Best of luck to the incoming mayor and once again, thank you for everything. Warmest regards, Staff Sergeant Ben Mahoney. I'm pleased to announce that the total mayoral engagements and meetings for this year has been 355. We continue to act as ambassadors for Farley Hospice, raising the profile at every opportunity. Fundraising has been more than £12,300 and I would like to welcome to this meeting Head of Farley Fundraising, Debbie de Boul. Would you like to come forward? Debbie is the fundraiser for Farley Hospice and I'd just like to say, thank you. It's been a pleasure. I really enjoyed my time.
Well, thank you very much. And I'd like to say on behalf of Farley Hospice, I'd like to thank Madam Mayor, the Mayoress, the Deputy Mayor and the Deputy Mayor Consort for your amazing support. And as we said right at the beginning of the year, hospices around the country are facing funding crises and to have you acting as an ambassador for us has been just amazing. And I hope we're going to stay as friends. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you. Agenda item three. Agenda item three is the election of the mayor. May I have nominations for the office of Mayor of the City of Chelmsford from the forthcoming year?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Can I first of all add my own congratulations to you for your year but say yes for looking ahead to the coming year, which we must now do? I'd like to propose councillor Jeanetta Sochin to be our mayor for the coming year. As many of you know, Jeanetta has a long track record of public and community service over many years, indeed decades. She's been a Great Baddeow Parish councillor for many years and chair for a number of the years that she served on the parish council. She was first elected to obviously then Chelmsford Borough Council in 2003 and has served for Great Baddeow West for most of that time since then. And as you are mostly all aware, her particular interest has been on planning issues where she's been a dedicated, impartial chair in the last six years and before that spokesperson and planning advocate. So she's joined here by many of her family. It's delighted to see so many of her family here this evening to support her and I know that they will be a great support to her in the year ahead. Many of you may be aware of councillor Sochin's connections to the Welsh Society as she is indeed herself Welsh. I don't know if that makes her our first ever Welsh mayor, I'm not sure. Someone will have to check that. Maybe there was another one in the last 140 years. So, and she's obviously proud of her heritage from there and that's where she went to university. And she's also has, well known in the craft sector where she's been Chair of the Guild of Silk Painters, an artist. I have at least one of her paintings in my house. And I'm sure, maybe she'll be a bit busy the next 12 months, but after that, maybe she'll get back to painting some more paintings and add to her collection. She'll be supported by former councillor Shaw and her husband over the coming year, I'm sure. And we look forward to them being our civic party for the coming year. So I am really pleased to propose councillor Jeanetta Sochin for mayor 2025-26.
Thank you, councillor Robinson. I will now call upon councillor Thorpe-Ax to second the nomination.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm very pleased to be able to second the nomination of councillor Sochin for mayor. I know councillor Sochin to be an active member of the community who's represented her patch of Great Baddeow West for many years and of course, as councillor Robyn said, also served on the local parish council with great distinction. My experience of her from the beginning, when I was first elected, was someone who was friendly and approachable and invariably smiling. I recall her giving me one or two pointers in those early days. Who does what? What can be found where? And that kind-heartedness is very much her hallmark. My greatest interaction with councillor Sochin has come through our mutual membership of the Planning Committee, which of course she chairs and does so extremely well. That is not an easy position to hold. Dealing with folks whose emotions are often running high, who may feel aggrieved, exasperated, confused and who can be a little raucous at times, and by the way, that's just us councillors who sit on the committee, is challenging. But she does it well and with good humour and I have no doubt that those skills will be used to the fullest as mayor, as will her evident commitment to fairness and serving the people of Chelmsford. There is of course much more to councillor Sochin than the political and public service side of things. Councillor Robinson has spoken to that already and I won't repeat what he said. But I have to say, as someone with absolutely zero artistic talent, councillor Sochin's work of silk dyes and paints is extremely impressive. I had a little look on her website when I was researching for this. And I understand that she gives talks on this and is a member of the local guild. Clearly someone of many talents. And as I said, it is my sincere pleasure to second this nomination. I have no doubt we will see a great deal of energy over the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. There be no other nominations. Is the nomination of councillor Jeanetta Sochin agreed? Thank you. I therefore declare councillor Jeanetta Sochin, elected mayor of Chelmsford for the forthcoming year.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the deputy mayor is elected by the council rather than it being purely a mayor's appointment, I have great pleasure in nominating councillor Smita Rajesh as deputy mayor for the coming year. I'm breaking too. Thank you. Are there any other nominations? In that case, is the nomination of councillor Smita Rajesh agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. I therefore declare councillor Smita Rajesh, elected deputy mayor of the City of Chelmsford for the forthcoming year. Please be seated. I'll now sign the declaration of acceptance of office. I, Jeanetta Sochin, having been elected to the office of Mayor of the City of Chelmsford, declare that I take the office upon myself and will duly fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgement and ability. I undertake to observe the code as to the conduct which is expected of mayors' members of the Chelmsford City Council. Thank you. Thank you. I shall now ask the Deputy Mayor to read and sign their declaration of acceptance of office.
I, Smear Rajesh, having been elected to the office of Deputy Mayor of the City of Chelmsford, declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgement and ability. I undertake to observe the code as to the conduct which is expected of members of Chelmsford City Council.
We now come to agenda item five. I'd like to ask the retiring Mayoress to invest the new Mayor's Mayoress with the chain of office. The new Mayor's Mayoress will in turn present Jackie Galley with a plaid. I now ask the retiring Deputy Mayor Consort to invest the new Deputy Mayor's Consort with their badge of office. The retiring Deputy Mayor's Consort will also be presented with their past badge of office. Thank you. I'm very grateful to all councillors for allowing me to become Mayor for this year. I've met so many Mayors who have held the office in my time as a parish and city councillor. What I consider they have in common is an immense pride in the City of Chelmsford. I look forward to following in their footsteps. Thank you also to our city staff who support us so well and to friends and families, some of whom have joined us this evening. With your support, I'm sure the Mayor Party can look forward to the coming year with confidence. Thank you. We now come to agenda seven. I invite Councillor Whitehead to propose a vote of thanks to the retiring Mayor for their past services.
Thank you very much indeed, Madam Mayor, and congratulations on your appointment. I'm always the first person to actually say 'Madam Mayor' at these things, which is good, and I'm sure lots of people will say it in the future. My duty is to talk about the past and, with a bit of luck, and this is where technology may or may not prove my undoing, show you a video of the events that took place whilst the Mayor was the Mayor of Chelmsford at that time. But let me start off by saying, as ever really, it's been an eventful year in world politics, but I was still well clear of those, as we're here to celebrate Chelmsford and not to worry about world events for an hour or so at least. But the Mayor and her Consort Jackie Galley, and also the Deputy Mayor and her Consort, have worked hard as ever really to get around and carry out the duties as Mayor. I think the Mayor found, like all Mayors, that there's more to do with being a Mayor than she thought, and that's for someone who was Deputy Mayor twice. I was going to make comments about not the bride and things, but I avoided all that, so I won't get into those sort of comments at all. But nonetheless, I think with all Mayors that they find how much work there is to do, as you indisputably discover, but nonetheless, they all do it so well that the thing goes through seamlessly. Now, as to the year itself, I said I avoid world politics, but I can't entirely avoid local politics, British politics. The general election brought in a new government, as we know, but that has had a dramatic effect and will have a dramatic effect on this and the future of the Mayor of the wonderful City of Chelmsford. As you know, the government has decided that this council will be abolished, really, not to use another word, and to be merged with a number of unitary authorities, still to be decided, that will cover Essex. So I'm not commenting on whether that's a good or bad idea, but nonetheless, the Mayor of Essex will be an entirely different person to the Mayor of Chelmsford or Braintree or wherever it happens to be. And so that from our point of view, we have a ceremonial Mayor who's entirely non-political and works, like anything, to go around and see all the various local charities and events. How that's going to work in the future again, I don't know. We have a couple of years' grace, as it were, and we will see what comes out of it all. But nonetheless, it's a sad day, I think, for Chelmsford really to be sort of going down, but Councillor Robinson has a plan really, I know, so we may rise like a phoenix from the ashes, never fear, we'll get there because we can't afford to lose that for the future. Now, there's a montage, if that's the right word, of photographs put together by the Mayor's wonderful secretary Catherine Neely and by Murphy Manning. And in a spirit of recycling, this is one that was used at the Mayor's Community Evening, so we're terribly keen on recycling on this side, as you know, and from that point of view, we will use it adding a little bit at the end. But from the point of view of that, this is where, as I say, technology may... What I'm going to try to do is to say what it is you're seeing, because the video itself didn't have a commentary, it's had music and so on, and the Mayor is turning up at various events really, so if you don't know what they are, it's slightly obscure, so you watch it all on television where they've got earpieces and do all this sort of stuff, and you're going to see me muck it all up, but never mind, we'll try to get it right and to show you the varying duties that the Mayor carries out in that period. So, if you want to...
Thank you, Councillor. Thank you, Councillor Whitehead.
Okay. Right, can we get the light things down above the screen for any experienced light person? Those buttons are so confusing that I've never understood them, I must admit. Otherwise you won't see them. Oh, good, it's not just me. Oh, no, no, we're done. Ah, that's right, good. Okay, so that's, as you can see, the usual one of Mayors planting trees and so on, and we've also got the next one down, interesting one, which is the dinosaur park at my farm. I'm not sure any Mayor in the past has ever had a dinosaur next to them, but as you can see, they were not phased by this. There's the Farley Hospice fundraising event there, and that's the last one, was raising the flag for our Armed Services. So a good mixture of various things, I think, that took place just in that initial period. All right, keep going. Excellent, thank you. Right, so here we are again with a great event, this is the D-Day Be... Oh, sorry, the Boltfest, and a chorus line on the left-hand side. And on the right-hand side, oh, you've shot one ahead there, ah, thank you, yes, I knew it wouldn't work, never mind. And so we've got the various events that took place, if you roll that through, it should, in theory... Or not? Go on, right here. So we have the Sikh Festival in Chelmsford, Fair Trade Event with our deputies, and the Bakngang High Street front, I'm not sure whether that was produced by the Mayor or not, did you paint that yourself, I'm not sure, very good it is. And Farley Hospice, of course, with a fundraising event on the left-hand side there. And raising the flag for the Armed Forces. Right, Remembrance Sunday, of course, the Mayor giving a very odd sideways look, I think, on that particular picture, come back, to our cadet really, but there we are. And the one at the bottom is her visit to Bakngang, and our next Mayor is going there as well really, so the Bakngang connection is going well. And then on to the Hindu Holy Festival of Colour, with the Deputy Mayor being appropriately dealt with, and the gang show, I think it is, on the left-hand side. Again, entirely one thing and another thing, which just goes to show the variety of everything that this Mayor and previous Mayors, of course, have carried out. And we have the leisure staff recognition event on the right-hand side, so all our staff who are actually getting awards for the terrific work they've been doing over the last year or so. And we've got on the other side, of course, a D-Day event with an appropriate car. And the Beaver's Party visit coming up at the top. Now we're on to the civic service and the Highlands Christmas is, say, open day, looking very chilly, that one, I have to say. And the Chelmsford Multi-Sport Champion down there as well. Enlightened opening night, I'm not entirely fully enlightened myself about that one, I can't deny it, but nonetheless, there we are. And we've got at the top mince pies, just to show it's still Christmas really, with Morrison's donating, I think, for the carol service. And the Santa sleigh down at the bottom. And Chelmsford Community Support Centre Heritage School. And I think the last one is the Raffaere Volunteer Event. See, it goes slowly when you want it to go fast. All right. And the CVS Mayor's Awards Presentation in the parlour. And, ooh, Christmas is coming again. Keen on Christmas, that's the Farley Christmas tree, anyway, let me tell you that, and the opening of the John Schellern Local Nature Reserve, which was also done at that sort of time. And of course, the tree planting, the famous tree planting that all Mayors... They all used to get little tiny silver spades, but the economy cut that back to ordinary spades and, really, the truth was, the actual manufacturers didn't make them anymore, but we won't say that. But nonetheless, the event itself is well attended and a great example of the way that we look after our Mayors in the past, really. And down at the bottom, specially added, is the VE Day Spitfire, very realistic look too, actually, one has to say. And the Mayor in suitable army protection. Oh, Winston Churchill cropped up as well, of course, as you'll see on the right-hand side. And finally, we have the Mayor opening a telephone box, this is in Bakngang, that's the... Nearly lost him, that's the Mayor of Bakngang on the left-hand side. And that telephone box was given by us many, many years ago as a telephone box and was next to Chelmsford Bridge and so on, but it became sort of redundant, like over here, but as you'll see inside, it has books in it. I mean, lots of ours over here have defibrillators in as well, which work very well, but that was the one. Oddly enough, it's not on the script, but there was the Bakngang newspaper, which I sort of glimpse every day, where it had a picture of all sorts of politicians and people in the events, and it said, 'The Mayor, the one wearing a tie', which just goes to show indeed how that Mayors wear ties as a rule, or not, not ladies, but sorry, yeah. But nonetheless, yeah, the Mayor over there, of course, is an executive Mayor, as we are going to have, as I said earlier on really, the ethics and such, so that he's the chief executive and the Mayor, which always confuses people, as Councillor Sosian may or may not find out when she goes there in a few weeks' time. But nonetheless, it just goes to show that we managed to do all of these things well, and I can thank the Mayor for all her work and the Deputy Mayor and the Deputy Mayor's Assistant from time to time as well, really, sitting up there hiding away. And I think the number of events has already been mentioned, and so I won't repeat all those, but it was all done for the right reasons for Farley, and can I again thank the Mayor and all the Mayoral Party for all their work and wish the future Mayor great success. Thank you very much indeed.
Councillor Foster, now my... Yes, you're second the Mayor's vote of thanks, I've lost my...
Oh, all right, Madam Mayor. We turned the lights out, you see, that was a...
Good evening, Madam Mayor, fellow councillors, members of the public. Well, Councillor Whitehead has, of course, virtually said all that's needed with his normal wit and charm, but this is the opportunity to celebrate Councillor Potter's time as Mayor of Chelmsford. Now, Councillor Potter and I go back over 20 years, in fact, because I know, working in housing in the city, that Councillor Potter was at times Chair of the Housing Committee and Chairs of other committees, so I know that her mayoral year was the culmination of many years of service to the city. I hope you've had a wonderful and fulfilling year. It certainly looks, with all of the photos, as though you have, and I know that any events that I've been to, that your presence and interest have been appreciated, as it's been mentioned. And one of the events that I was at, Councillor Potter was certainly not afraid to join in. Somebody mentioned today that in South Waddam, you were joining in, was it the Hokey Cokey? Knees Up Mother Brown the other day? And when there was a slight hiccup with the carol service hymnbooks, you were around there making sure everybody had a hymnbook, so much admired. But not only have you done that, but you have presided over our debates at council meetings with fairness and clarity, and it's not always easy, because, as we know, we all like to bang on a bit, so you've been very good at telling us sort of who can speak, how long they can speak, and whether they can speak two or three, you know, two or three times. And finally, and I've rehearsed this bit, so hopefully I shall get through it, I remember being very touched a year ago when you made a very simple statement, and you said that you didn't want to spend the next year, your mayoral year, accompanied by any other man, and that you had chosen Jackie Galley as your Consort, and I think we all thought that that was an excellent idea and a good choice. And I think, so, Madam Mayor and the Mayoress, I hope you've both thoroughly enjoyed your year, and I'm sure your partners have been with you in spirit, looking over your shoulders and cheering you on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Potter. It's now my pleasure to present the past Mayor's badge to the retiring Mayor. Will Councillor Pointer Potter please join me? Will councillor Potter please join me? We have the tour.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I've waited thirty-four years for this badge, it's a pleasure to wear it. I stood here one year ago, formally being appointed the mayor of Chelmsford for 2024/25, something I had dreamed about for years. As I stated in my acceptance speech when being nominated, I could not accept another man at my side, so chose John Gally's widow, Jackie, as my mayoralist. John Gally was our best cabinet member of finance. And yes, I would say that councillor Davidson.
I would agree that he was an excellent cabinet member for finance.
Thank you. I could not have chosen a better person than Jackie Gally. Whilst Jackie and I knew one another, we only met when there was an event at the council and John would be talking to my husband and I had to Jackie. Jackie and I decided that Farley Hospice would be the mayor's charity of the year because they arranged a nursing home for my husband for his final weeks. And Jackie undertook bereavement counselling at Farley's and now works in their garden and one of their shops in Borum. I had decided not to have a charity committee. I felt that my friends and acquaintances had supported me when I was deputy mayor twice before. And also, as we wanted to support Farley more in an ambassadorial way. That didn't mean that we stopped supporting other charities. I can't tell you the number of raffle prizes we have given, raffle tickets that we have purchased, pot plants that we have bought, games that we have played. I won't go about the dances, that we have tried to support all. Catherine, the mayor's secretary, had taken me on a mayor's away day in Brentwood to meet up with other mayors to discuss good ways and bad ways of undertaking the role of a mayor. Jackie and I didn't like to let anyone down, so we took on quite a few engagements. But at one point that came out of the away day was that it wasn't the number of engagements you attended, it was the quality of your presence at that engagement. So much so that both are trailing through the internet to get as much information as possible before an engagement date of the person whom we were meeting. I was honoured to be considered as mayor, and in my mind, as I'd been deputy mayor in 1995 and under Alan Wilshire, and in 2019 under Bob Massey, I thought I had a good idea of what it was going to be like being mayor. Boy, was I wrong. The engagements came in fast and furious. Over the years, we have lived in Chelmsford. You think you'd know a lot of places, but I can tell you, I've been driven to roads and streets and back alleys where I've never been before. I have seen houses, offices, gardens, parks, et cetera, that I never knew existed. But more importantly, we have all met a lot of local residents and found out a lot more of what's going on in Chelmsford. Besides the opening of coffeehouses and bakeries and estate agents, et cetera, we have met many charming people working for many companies and charities that we were not aware of. We have met so many volunteers that work quietly behind the scenes. As I've always said in my speeches, where would we be today without our volunteers? It was therefore decided that at the mayor's community evening, only unpaid volunteers were to be invited. We kept to our guns and politely thanked those who proposed their chief executive or treasurer, who was paid a salary, and made it quite clear it was unpaid volunteers only. It was an extremely nice evening and we received many comments thanking us for the invitations. And the Lord Lieutenant Jennifer Tollhouse gave a wonderful speech at the end. As I am an absolute royalist and following religiously our royal family, I, together with the High Sheriff, was pleased to meet the Duchess of Edinburgh when visiting the Mother's Union English for Women's Programme at the YMCA. We also met up with the Lord Lieutenant, the High Sheriff of Essex, David Hurst, and the new incoming High Sheriff, Julie Fosch, and Essex County Council Chairman Jill Reeves, together with our husbands and wives, and many local mayors and mayoralists in Essex Southend and Tharrock. We attended the inauguration of the new dean of Chelmsford Cathedral, Jessica Martin, a lovely addition to Chelmsford. During our term, we not only had the anniversary of D-Day but also VE Day. These events were very successful and superbly organised. It was extremely pleasing to see so many attend of all ages. We attended the launch of the Essex Community Tree website, a useful and easy-to-read website for those residents seeking assistance in life. We visited a little charity called Read Easy and we were impressed with the way they encouraged those adults who couldn't read to reach out and overcome this by offering one-to-one tuition. During the year, we presented the CVS Awards and handed out certificates to Chelmsford City Council staff who had completed twenty and for one man, thirty years' service. Excuse me. Unfortunately, I caught the virus going around the borough and at Freedom Mountains, after an age-concerned Christmas lunch, I had to be taken home and then straight to bed in the afternoon. When I woke up bleary-eyed, I rushed to phone Catherine, my secretary, but she wasn't answering the office phone, so I assumed she'd left the office. So I phoned John, our chauffeur, to tell him how ill I was and I couldn't take the last few engagements before Christmas Day. A voice in the background said, "Who's that, John?", to which he replied, "It is the mayor, as casual and as calm as anything." As I got back into bed, I read the clock again and realised it was half past six the next morning. I had slept for sixteen hours since the previous afternoon and had woken John and his wife Janet up. Please accept my apologies, Mrs Kempson, for waking up the pair of you so early. And please accept this little gift from me. Thank you. As mentioned earlier, my cadet, Staff Sergeant Ben of Mahoney, could not be in attendance tonight due to him taking his exams. Ben hopes to be accepted at Sandhurst, so these exams are very important to him. I would like to thank David Cattle, the vicar of my local church, who has given prayers at four council meetings and by civic service and Christmas service. I would like to say thank you and present you with a little gift, but actually it's a big gift. And as you travel here by bicycle, I was worried you couldn't take it home and might fall off your bike. Sorry about this. So I shall pop round to the vicarage for a cup of tea at some point and hand it to you. It is a larger picture of the mayor's Christmas card of St Michael and All Angels Church, painted by a well-known Gulliwood artist, if you remember, with David in the port. So it's a bigger version's coming. I'd like to thank Sebastian hiding up there. Sebastian is the canon placenter, placenter there, from Chelmsford Cathedral for all his hard work in organising the best civic service and Christmas service, traditional and old-fashioned. For you, Sebastian, I will offer my services of sewing on your badges onto your white robe and any other sewing jobs you might have as they're falling off. It is very difficult to say thank you to all colleagues, friends and acquaintances who have helped Jackie and I over the mayoral year. But I would like to thank the deputy mayor, councillor Susan Sullivan, who has filled in for me on many occasions. Being a West Ham season ticket holder together with her husband, and I know a devoted West Ham fan when I see one, as my stepson is equally as fanatical at seeing home games, Susan and John tried not to miss any. So I would like to give you a small gift as a memory of your days as deputy mayor, but also as a staunch West Ham fan. Who's got that one? There you are, Susan. I know you like the badge on top of the car. It's very heavy. Be careful to get it out. Okay, excellent. Oh, sorry. Keep those holding between you and then we'll see the West Ham. My stepson would love this. Thank you very much. Thank you, Susan. To John, Susan's consort, who has supported Susan at all events, I have noticed over the year how much you enjoyed biscuits. Please accept this small gift from Jackie and myself, a tin of biscuits. There you are, John. Thank you very much. It's a stag. Well done, thanks, John. To my dear friend Gillian, thanks for... To my dear friend Gillian, thanks for agreeing to be my consort when Jackie, my mayoralist, was unable to accompany me. It's a small gift of appreciation. Here she comes, running up. Thanks, Gillian. To John Kempson, not a driver, not a chauffeur, but one who takes care of you whilst on engagements. There isn't anything he doesn't know about being a mace bear and how and when a mayor and mayoralist should arrive, wait to be greeted, and indeed, when to leave. He is in constant eye contact of you, albeit it may be the chain is more interested in than the mayor, so be it. There isn't anyone he doesn't know, from the High Sheriff, the Lord Lieutenant, other mayors, et cetera. So please accept this small gift from Jackie and I to be spent at your favourite restaurant. Also, some small vouchers for Little John and Kevin, your fellow chauffeurs, to thank them for looking after us both. To Catherine, where do I begin? Firstly, she was sorely missed when she had to go into hospital during the first couple of weeks, months of my term, but soon bounced back and took charge again. She sits in a little corner of an office and gets on with her work, making sure the mayor arrives on time and is fully conversant with where she is going, what she has to say and whom she has to meet. So please accept this small gift from Jackie and I. Thank you, Jackie. Lastly, and most importantly, I would personally like to say thank you to Jackie. For I could not have undertaken this position of mayor without you by my side. Whilst we knew the protocol of how to act and how to speak, I went to say thank you. We found out that we had the same sense of humour and spent many times laughing in the back of the car going home. We both really enjoyed ourselves, and I have a little present for you. By making her work. To Jackie. To Jackie, I'm presenting an empty box.
It is as well, I think that's...
I looked far and wide for something for Jackie and I. Something that would not only, we would not only forget being mayor and mayoralist, but we're here because of our husbands and the situation. And unfortunately, it should have been delivered two days ago and it hasn't. So I just think it's in the empty box, there is a photo of it. And what I've done, of course, is matting brooches, because we remember Terry and John.
Brilliant, yeah, thank you very much.
From Janet to Janetta, now known as Madam Mayor, I wish you all success in your year. Bear in mind the number of outfits you will wear and endeavour to keep that large, heavy chain around your neck in position. I use these particular safety pins to secure the ribbons for my chain. And they did not ruin any of my clothes. So I present to you not just any old safety pins, but Marks and Spencer's finest. Thank you very much. Both Jackie and I have thoroughly enjoyed ourselves but have maintained, believe it or not, a dignified presence at all occasions, except when I'm doing the hokey-cokey. And now look forward to having a rest, getting our lives back on track. And in early June, we are flying off together to Madeira for a well-earned holiday. Thank you to all the councillors here tonight who nominated me for this role. It's been a pleasure representing the city council as the first citizen, mayor of Chelmsford, 2024/2025. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
And now, before I sit... Yes, that's right. Sorry, we have an extra item that, because of the moving speech, didn't get in. I'd like to ask councillor Susan Sullivan to join me to present them with the badge of office.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything. That was a lovely, moving speech from councillor Potter. Thank you. Agenda item eight is Mayor's announcements. I'm delighted to announce that I have two chaplains for my year of office. Can't be content with one. Pandit Aaron Chastrey, who is a Hindu priest, and the Reverend Canon Sebastian Harris from Chelmsford Cathedral. I'm grateful to them both for agreeing to join me. I also have a very worthwhile charity to support. It's the Centre for Voluntary Service, an amazing umbrella charity with Lorraine, Sally and Alison at the helm, all three of whom are here tonight. The charity is the backbone of so many charities, big or small, in Chelmsford. The place to learn how to set up, how to run it, including financial applications and ongoing support if necessary. There will be a chance to find out more about them in the foyer after this meeting. Finally, I wish to extend an invitation to everyone to join me in my civic service at the cathedral on Sunday 22nd of June at 3.30pm. You will all be very welcome. I'll move on to agenda nine, Leader's Scheme of Delegation. Councillor Robinson, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a relatively routine item of business. Under the constitution, executive powers are vested in the leader and the scheme of delegation explains that they are actually exercised by the Cabinet in meeting rather than by any individual portfolio holder. So I move.
Thank you. Councillor Robinson, is that seconded? Thank you. Are there any questions? In that case, we are then asked to note the Leader's Scheme of Delegation. Is this noted? Thank you. Item ten, arrangements for and appointments to city council bodies and outside bodies.
Thank you. Yes, these were sent to you yesterday as an attachment to... Schedule A refers to the political groups and lists all the councillors and how they are constituted. If you'll indulge me for a moment, I'd just like to refer to what councillor Potter said in her announcements as to why we have two changes on this list. So I'd like to add my own personal welcome to councillors Ayers and Manley. But I'd particularly like to take a moment, although he's not here, to reflect on the very long service of former councillor Graham Pooley. He spent twenty of the last thirty years in this chamber. I think he probably holds the record for more wards represented than any other councillor in history. Broomfield, Pleshy and Great Waltham to start with, Marconi, Broomfield and the Walthams and then latterly, Molsham and Central. He was also passionate about planning, but particularly planning policy. And when we had the administration before 2003, he was the Chair of Development Policy Committee and he was really keen on ensuring quality design through the local plan process. He was a strong advocate for the master plan process to ensure that we get a strong local input, residents' input into the master planning process. So Graham has contributed an awful lot over the last twenty years. Housing was his other great love and, as you know, he set up a housing charity, which sadly folded. But he provided a really important service to vulnerable people in Chelmsford and he has continued to be a strong advocate for the rights of homeless people and people with disabilities. So he will be missed, his wit, his insight. We've been able to recognise his service, as you know, by nominating him to attend one of the Buckingham Palace Garden Parties this month, which I think is worthy recognition of that twenty years of service to Chelmsford. The other councillor, former councillor Marie Goldman, obviously was here for slightly less, for six years and we've now sent her to another place and from which we will still see her from time to time. She was a great deputy leader. Fantastic to have her by my side over the last six years as we put together the administration, particularly through, those were two particularly grim years of the Covid crisis. So I'd like to say thank you and pay tribute to both of them for their years of service to Chelmsford City Council. Moving on to the following page, which sets out the Cabinet posts. As you've noted, we're only making one very slight change. I just thought I'd take a moment to explain that. It's transferring property from councillor Foster to councillor Goldman. And part of the reason for that is to, as councillor Whitehead alluded to, local government reorganisation. That is taking up an awful lot of my time and the chief executive's time. We hope that most of it's productive. Sometimes it doesn't always feel like that. But in order to give myself a little bit more time, councillor Foster will be taking on some of my responsibilities and sharing that load. So that's the main reason for that change. There are a lot of property issues that are coming up. We're ambitious, particularly on the housing front, as you know, and that will be safely in the hands of councillor Goldman in future. So those are the changes that we're making to the Cabinet. And then you've got the usual appointments to committees with their chairs and vice-chairs and then the list of all the appointments to the outside bodies. Any gaps, the recommendation is that the monitoring officer be empowered to make any minor changes that come up with the gaps that haven't yet been filled. So I move all of those schedules. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Robinson. Is that seconded? Thank you. Are there any questions on the schedules? It'll be busier in future. Thank you. We're asked to approve the schedule. May I ask those in favour to please show? Those against? Any abstentions? That concludes tonight's evening's meeting. I declare the meeting closed and invite members and our guests to join us for refreshments, which will be in the foyer. Thanks, everyone, very much.